Hello and welcome to District Two County Council Candidate Forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Baltimore County and the Randalls Town NAACP. My name is Diane Ashenbrenner and I'm with the League of Women Voters Baltimore County. We're pleased to present this opportunity for the voters of Baltimore County to meet the candidates and hear what they have to say about important issues facing our county. The League and the NAACP are nonprofit, nonpartisan political organizations. Neither organization supports nor opposes candidates for public office and neither supports political parties. The League's mission is to encourage informed and active participation in government, work to increase understanding of major public policy issues and influence public policy through education and advocacy. The NAACP seeks to assure that African Americans as well as all citizens participate in our democracy as active and informed voters. A few housekeeping details before we begin. The forum this evening is a webinar, which means that audience members can submit questions to the host in the chat, but cannot post questions verbally or enable their video. Audience members will not be able to view the questions submitted by others. We invite you to submit questions via the chat where they will be collected, vetted, and passed to the moderator. Our screener will review questions for repetition and choose for variety. Questions submitted should be appropriate for all candidates and we may not have time to address all questions submitted by the audience. During the forum, the candidates will respond to questions, but this is not a debate and time will not be provided for candidates to rebut each other's responses. Civility is expected and candidates who misbehave such as talking over other candidates will be warned and may be muted or removed from the forum. Please note that no unauthorized recordings of this forum are permitted as its content is the property of the League of Women Voters Baltimore County and the Randalls Town NAACP and may not be used without permission. A recording will be available after the forum. And with that, we're ready to begin our forum tonight. This evening, our time keeper is Stacy Morrison, our question facilitator is Lisa Barkin, and I will be the moderator tonight. The Baltimore County Council is the elected legislative body and it is vested with all lawmaking power granted by the county charter and by the General Assembly of Maryland. Tonight, we will hear from the candidates for county council in District Two, Republican James Amos and Democrat Izzy Patoka. The candidates will each make a two-minute house opening statement as well as two-minute closing statements after the question and answer period. The order of the opening statements was determined by the alphabetical order of their last names. The closing statement will be in reverse order from the opening statement. The timekeeper will give a verbal 30-second warning and announce when the lot of time is up. After the opening statements, each of the candidates will have the opportunity to respond to questions. Candidates will not be allowed to give rebuttals. We will begin with questions developed by the League of Women Voters and the Randalls Town NAACP, followed by questions from the audience. Candidates will have two minutes to respond to the questions and time limits will be strictly enforced. A timekeeper will alert the speaker when they have 30 seconds left and when time is up, at which time the speaker must stop within 10 seconds. Our goal is to end the forum at 7:00 PM and we appreciate everyone's help in achieving this goal. We will now have the two-minute opening statements from each of the candidates. Mr. Amos, you will begin first.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the NAACP for the opportunity to participate in this forum. And everybody that's present, I just want to thank you and the reason I'm running is we touched on the redistricting. Originally, I lived in District Four, but I signed the waiver with the Board of Elections to run in whichever district I wound up in after redistricting. So my part of town is Woodlawn and now Woodlawn's split between three different councilmanic districts and I can assure you that people are not happy with that. The main political and policy issues I'm running on are crime, the school board, and development. I believe crime is completely out of control, not only in this county, but statewide and nationwide now. And I think everybody knows it. It's just gotten very, very bad.
30 seconds.
The school system is not being transparent. There's a lot of money being wasted. And as far as development, I think that needs to be looked at very closely and put the brakes on some of these development projects. So those are the main issues that there. I also think residents of District Two also care about these quality of life issues that are really upsetting the people. So that's why I decided to get in and run for county council.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Amos.
Well, thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Randalls Town branch of the NAACP for hosting the Candidates Forum this evening. I believe that I'm well qualified for the position. I'm currently the council member for the Second District of Baltimore County. I've been community-centered my entire life. I'm local. I grew up in Lockarn. I attended Woodlawn High School. I went to Towson University where I earned my bachelor's degree and my master's degree, both in geography and environmental planning. I'm trained as a community planner by profession, so land use is my specialty, which is an essential function of being a council member. But I also understand budgeting as I was the principal author of Baltimore City's $3 billion capital budget and also the principal author of Baltimore County's $3 billion budget when I was chief of capital budgeting for both Baltimore City and also for Baltimore County. I believe in improving the nuts and bolts of government, which is why I serve on Baltimore County's Code Enforcement Work Group, the Solid Waste Work Group, and also the Work Group on Affordable Housing. As council members, we act on numerous pieces of legislation. Two pieces of legislation that I am very proud of, I accomplished in my first year as a council member.
30 seconds.
We passed legislation to require developers to pay impact fees to offset the impact of their development so that taxpayers are not burdened with these costs. I've always believed that development must be done with respect to the community, with respect to the environment, and also with respect to Main Street. Another piece of legislation that I'm proud of that we did in the first year was we moved council work sessions from 2:00 back to 4:00 so that more people can participate in the work that we do on council. Thank you for giving me a few moments to speak and I look forward to a healthy dialogue this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Patoka, and you will get our first question. The first question will come to you. We are going to move to our question and answer portion of the forum. Our first question is on budget. What are your priorities for the Baltimore County budget? And are there particular areas of the county that you see as priority for these funds?
Absolutely. So let's talk about the budget for a moment. 51% of our budget goes to the school system. So 49% is left for other government functions and some is on the operating side and some is on the capital side. For me, the priorities are clearly our inner Beltway neighborhoods because I think that we haven't really paid enough attention to our inner Beltway neighborhoods, at least over the past 10 or 15 years. So I'm talking about the Liberty Road Corridor. I'm talking about the Pikesville Corridor inside the Beltway. We used to have an Office of Community Conservation, which was solely focused on inner Beltway neighborhoods. I think that we need to invest in our inner Beltway neighborhoods like open space, like we did in the area that I represent now by spending $1.2 million to acquire Paul's Farm so that it can be used as a park instead of 65 housing units in an area that lacks open space. So to make our inner Beltway communities, our older neighborhoods attractive, we need to have good schools, certainly. We need to have good open space and we need to have the amenities that we see that are showing up in areas that are outside the Beltway. And so I've worked closely with some of the key stakeholders like the Randalls Town NAACP and the Liberty Road Task Force. Also helped steer $8.8 million to the Pikesville Armory. And just last night, I attended the Reimagine Security Square Charette to begin planning on how we reinvent Security Square, which is a key. It's not in the district, but it's important to families that live in the district.
Time is up. Thank you, Mr. Amos. And I can repeat the question if you need me.
Can you repeat it again? Sorry, I was trying to find the mute button.
What are your priorities for the Baltimore County budget? And are there particular areas of the county that you see as priority for these funds?
Yes, the police. This county spends nearly three times as much on the school board, the Board of Education, excuse me, as it does on law enforcement. And you're not taking into consideration the capital budget and state and federal aid. I believe some of that money can be redirected toward the Police Department and the Sheriff's Department and the Circuit Court. I grew up two blocks from Greenwood Road, so I know a little bit about that place. I'm going to call for the Department of Legislative Services, Office of Legislative Audits to conduct a full and thorough audit of Baltimore County's school system. Now, some people say that's not right or you can't, you know, it can't be done, but I'm still going to call for it. They won't even open up the books on the school budget. And interestingly, when the council voted no confidence in the current superintendent, my opponent, as well as Mr. Jones, were the only two that stood up for him. But police and crime have to be the focus. If we can get crime under control, then we, you know, other issues will start to take care of themselves and we can start to work on. As far as security mall, it's very important in my area and I will be attending one of those charrettes myself. But I can tell you this, people around here don't want an amphitheater put in there. That's just going to make it worse.
Thank you. Now, we'll move to our second question and Mr. Amos, you'll be first to answer on this time. The second question is related to infrastructure. What do you think are Baltimore County's most critical infrastructure needs for the coming four years?
Okay, well, I'll start with Reisterstown Road. Everybody views that as a problem and I think that's something, you know, it's like been just like that forever. My parents been in office for eight years and nothing's really been done about it. In fact, he mentioned the Pikesville Armory. I had told a thousand friends of Pikesville that we really
I have to ask you to refrain from discussing your candidate directly. We ask you to just present your opinion here, your position. Thank you.
Okay, well, this is a big problem, but it's infrastructure throughout the county. And some of that federal money should be directed towards repairing our infrastructure on this recent appropriation from the federal government. You know, there's traffic congestion everywhere. There's been a PUD proposed on Dogwood Road near the Beltway. I mean, Dogwood Road during rush hour is already a nightmare. I can imagine how that would be if 27 or 28 units were put in up there. It's just, we really got to get, you know, and it's not just the roads and bridges and tunnels themselves. It's, we need to take a good look at the traffic engineering. And for instance, we can't get turn lights on dog turn lanes on Dogwood Road. How much?
I believe it's been called time, so you can finish your thought.
Sorry.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Amos. Mr. Patoka, do you need me to repeat the question?
I do not, related to infrastructure priorities. And so for me, and just to, for the record, I'm finishing out my first term as a council member. And when I ran four years ago, I knocked on 11,000 doors, came close to 11,000, maybe met 11,000 doors. And with each door knock meeting a constituent on the front porch, about, I would say that about a 50% rate was, can you get my street resurfaced? And part of being a council member is to be an advocate for the communities that you serve. And so I would give an example as the Valley Brook Community Association. We heard over and over that their streets need to be resurfaced and in the first term, we got every street in Valley Brook resurfaced. And more recently, as I was working my way through the Lockarn neighborhood from door to door, from porch to porch, we noticed some severe need in the Lockarn area and almost all the communities that we go to. For example, in Lockarn, Arbuthis Avenue, that street is in the condition that you would see in a third world nation, not in a 900,000 modern county like Baltimore County. So Arbuthis Avenue is top of my radar screen. It's a little street, but it's the worst street I've seen in this county. Other areas of infrastructure aside from streets are sewer lines. There's an undersized interceptor underneath Lake Roland that takes three pipes into it and it's undersized. And if you want to know what keeps me awake at night is that sewer line that's under Lake Roland. And let me just say, the other thing that I'm really concerned about is the impact of development and how we how we accommodate for the stormwater because when you create development, it changes the natural flow of water and we need to be really responsible on how we treat the velocity and flow of that water. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the next question, we will start with you, Mr. Patoka. It is also on infrastructure. What steps should the county take now to protect residents from extreme weather events and long-term climate changes?
Well, that's a great question and I kind of touched on it at the end of the last question, but I'll expound upon it. Is so we as council members, we have, we don't have a lot of authority, but in land use, we have broad authority. We're the final say in that. And so we need to treat this, the earth that we live on, because there's no planet B, with special attention, especially as it relates to development. And we need to reduce the amount of impervious surface and not create more impervious surface that changes, as I mentioned earlier, the velocity and flow and natural characteristics of water. And so for me, with the authority that a council member has is that we need to really focus on how we handle our zoning. It's, we're going to have comprehensive zoning in 2023, in August of 2023. It'll go through August of 2024. And last time, four years ago, during the CZMP, I downzoned 220 acres of land as a proactive measure to protect our environment. And I don't know that any other council member has done downzoning to that degree and it's not to
30 seconds.
It's to protect this earth that we live on and we need to take proactive measures and build more parks rather than, in fact, over the course of the last three years, we created three new parks instead of three new housing units. So I think that moves the needle in the right direction in terms of protecting, protecting what we can do at the local level.
Time is up. Thank you, Mr. Patoka. And Mr. Amos, your comments, please.
Well, glad Mr. Patoka mentioned Lake Roland and I think those sewer lines are a serious issue. However, another serious issue is the earthen part of the dam there. And now that the county has possession of the park, I believe that the earthen part of the dam really needs to be reinforced because I'm old enough to remember Hurricane Agnes and everybody was terrified that it was going to give way and flood all of central and downtown Baltimore. So I do believe that is, should be a priority when it comes to infrastructure and the environment. But also, I believe the Restoration Act needs to be amended or outright repealed because you got, it was touched on earlier about the inside the Beltway part of the county. While there are a lot of very unhappy people outside the Beltway, particularly farmers and rural property owners about what's being done there. These people get $1,200 from the state just to let some contractor come in and start digging up around streams and creeks. And a lot of the complaints I'm getting is it's making pollution and runoff worse. And runoff and pollution is one of the big problems we have with overdevelopment. So we really need to take a hard look at these issues and use common sense and stop worrying about money and making these contractors and, shall I say, donors happy. And I'll leave it at that.
Time is up. All right. Thank you very much for those comments. The next question will go first to Mr. Amos. It's on safety. What steps could the county council adopt to prevent recidivism and decrease crime?
Excuse me, something just popped up on my screen. It's gone now. Well, we need to work with our state and federal partners. And there's a lot of reforms that need to be made at those levels. And I will certainly, if elected, lobby our delegation in Annapolis and in Washington to start making these changes. You know, right now, it's like a revolving door. Gladly, we don't have some of the problems like they're having in New York with their no bail walls and stuff like that. But we need to start getting tougher on crime. I've never been one that's in favor of the death penalty for every homicide that occurs, but I believe it needs to be restored in the state of Maryland for some of the most egregious crimes, like killing a police officer or mass murder. I'm sure everybody remembers hearing about Joseph Palczynski. Well, he left us early, so he never went to trial. But, you know, we have had mass murder in this county before and we still have a homicide, maybe down slightly this year, but all Part One crimes are way up.
30 seconds.
One of the problems I see is the county executive and the council majority, they haven't spoken out about any of the radical ideas coming out of Baltimore City and the city's leadership because criminals don't respect jurisdictional boundaries. The county police can't go into the city and arrest these people unless they've already committed a crime in the county. I mean, it's just that simple and
Time is up. Thank you, Mr. Amos. Mr. Patoka, what steps could the county council adopt to prevent recidivism and decrease crime?
Okay, I'm going to form that into two questions. One is related to recidivism and the second one is related to reducing crime. They are kind of combined, but I view them as two different questions. In terms of recidivism, I would say that our office, the county's Department of Economic and Workforce Development, really needs to work with other entities of government with ex-offenders and start to help with placement. And I don't think that our Department of Economic and Workforce Development has really zoned in and keyed in on that aspect of trying to place someone who has been incarcerated with that, with a job. The greatest form of dignity is having a job and I think that that's, that would move us in the right direction in terms of reducing recidivism. In terms of reducing crime, I've worked closely with both the Pikesville Police Community Relations Council and also the Woodlawn Police Community Relations Council, the Franklin Police Community Relations Council, and the Towson Police Community Relations Council because the east side of the district, Ruxton, from Falls Road to Charles is in the Towson precinct and some of the district is actually in the Towson precinct. And so working closely and communicating with community leaders and our police department and also with our city partners. Councilman Yitzhak Schleifer and I speak regularly on issues that impact both the city and the county and the Northwestern District and the Northern District on the city side. We try to foster strong communications between our precincts here in Baltimore County and the precincts in Baltimore City so that they're aware of what's going on. But sometimes the boundaries create an opportunity for criminal activity. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Patoka, we're going to stick with you as we move to a next question. This question is related to health. In Baltimore County, a number of communities currently face food deserts and thousands of residents face food insecurity. How will you work to resolve these situations?
Well, thank you for that question. And so as I mentioned in my opening remarks during the COVID-19 crisis, and I'm not sure we're out of it, we were in the trenches with seven faith-based organizations, working closely because everyone was in a food desert because we couldn't get out of the house. We might recall that it wasn't that long ago that we, when you went to the grocery store, you had your head down. You got your essentials. You got in and out. You didn't look at anybody. You didn't talk to anybody. And so, and the shelves were empty. And so we were in somewhat of a food desert then. A former member of my staff, Ashley Wallington, who was the Director of Community Relations in my office, was spearheading that. And so she did such a great job that County Executive Olshewski thought that he would offer Ashley the opportunity to be Director of Food Security in Baltimore. uh, offer Ashley the opportunity to be Director of Food Security in Baltimore County. So you couldn't find a better person for that job. And so we've got an excellent relationship, certainly with Ashley. He, uh, she interned for me when I worked at Life Bridge Health, came on when I became a council member, and now is doing great things in terms of food security. We've already got a grocery store that's going to be coming into the vacated
Thirty seconds.
At Milford Mill and Liberty Road. I can't say who it is, but we have a non-binding letter of intent. I wish it were binding, but it is a letter of intent from a national grocer to move into that, um, that area which, um, is, does need a grocery store and, uh, uh, hopefully that, that will happen in the near future. So thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Amos, to you.
Well, I'm not sure. Food desert is another one of those new fancy, uh, terms that's going around. But let me first start saying, by saying, I had, uh, COVID-19 back in May and almost put an end to me. I was in real bad shape for the first two days, so I take it personally. Uh, and I think the crisis is over, but there may be, uh, um, more problems with it, like the flu every year. Um, but I'll, I'll say this, uh, our churches and other charitable organizations and NGOs, they should be stepping up more, but I think, you know, it's not just unemployment and inflation, but it's supply chain issues for the last year and a half that have also caused a lot of problems with the food supply. Uh, I think the county should do what it can to help fill these gaps because every, nobody in the United States or Baltimore County should be going hungry. Um, you know, I, I'll add one last thing as far as Mr. Olachewski's, uh, regarding health and, uh, um, his executive order making this a sanctuary county does not help matters. It puts a burden not only on our police and our schools, but also on our hospitals and other healthcare services. Not only that, you know, like, uh, you know, community diseases do come in when people circumvent the law. That was one of the reasons we have immigration and customs laws. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Amos. Uh, we're going to move to a next question, and we will stay with you first. What are your plans for improving the availability of affordable housing?
Well, one of the first things we need to do is start taking a look at renovating and rehabilitating existing properties. Uh, we shouldn't just, at the drop of a hat, start building new properties. But I also believe, and there, there should be a stat, you know, it may take a statutory or regulatory change to make it happen, but Baltimore City, we need to stop letting them rent out blocks of townhouses and apartments in the county. Because, and nothing against poor people's, people on Section 8, but Baltimore City should take care of its own residents and let Baltimore County take care of its residents. Uh, you know, we already have a bigger population now than Baltimore City. And when I was young, it was the reverse. You know, and where it makes sense to build new housing, then we should do it. But we need to keep the environment, uh, we, we need to keep the environment in mind, too. That, that's an important priority, too. Uh, I agree with my opponent about the impact fees. But I do not agree with some on the council or Mr. Olachewski
Thirty seconds.
Trying to waive developer fees. That, you know, when I get my CAT licenses every year, I don't get my fees waived. Uh, you know, I have to pay for another county service. I don't get my fees waived. So why should these rich developers get their fees waived? So anyway, uh, the environment should be considered just as, just as important as, uh, the actual housing problem itself. Because if we live in squalor, what's the point in having good housing? You know, it just, that doesn't make sense. Anyway, I'm sorry I went over.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Amos. And Mr. Petoka, what are your plans for improving the availability of affordable housing?
So we need to meet our voluntary compliance agreement on affordable housing. And so how do we get there? Um, as I mentioned earlier, I'm a, I'm a planner by trade. I'm nationally certified as a planner, and in order to keep my planning credentials up, I need to, uh, continue, get continuing education credits. And so I attend lots of webinars related to planning and affordable housing. And in these webinars and these, uh, for contin-, uh, in continuing education, planners across the country are saying that we need to revisit our zoning code, not just Baltimore County, but every jurisdiction in the United States. And the reason we need to revisit our zoning codes is because the framework of our zoning code is based on retail and commercial that behaves differently now than it did when the zoning code was first written. Also, office space behaves very different than it did when, um, the zoning code was first written. So our basic framework of our zoning code post-pandemic is different than it was when it was first written. So we need to unpack it layer by layer. And in that unpacking and reforming of the zoning code, I believe that there is a lane, and not just me, but planners across the country believe that there's a wide open lane
Thirty seconds.
For affordable housing. Because let's say, for example, you have a fledgling shopping center that's not performing well because retail has changed so much. So in our zoning code, can we find a mixed-use opportunity? But at the same time, we've got to look at implementing the measures of the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance. Um, typically, shopping centers are near met, or near, uh, transit, and that creates opportunity. But again, we want to make sure that we have adequate public facilities as well.
Time is up. Thank you very much. And our, our last question, we'll start with you, Mr. Petoka. How would you encourage first-time home ownership, especially for minority county residents?
Well, it's, I would say it's tougher now as, um, as interest rates are rising. Um, and I think that will, will have an impact on housing prices. But I do think that we now have a Department of Housing in Baltimore County, which we did not have, uh, in a count which is odd because uh, we're a county approaching a million residents and not having a housing department or a transportation department. Uh, the head of housing is Terry Hickey, very talented person. And I think that we can, uh, incentivize on the county side, um, to, and provide opportunities for first-time buyers, uh, live near, live near where you work programs. When I worked at Life Bridge Health, I, um, instituted live near, live near your, live near where you work programs at both, uh, the Park Heights area for Sinai Hospital and also in the Randallstown area for Northwest Hospital. And I think we can do the same thing with not just Baltimore County, but our anchor institutions like our hospitals, our community colleges, and its employees. And in fact, in one of, uh, a development proposal that we had in the second district, um, near the Garrison Forest School, we asked the developer to provide opportunities of, um, providing, I think it was four to six units at a lower cost for employees, teachers, or employees of the Garrison Forest School. So I think that we need to be creative, but we also need to be creative and firm.
All right. Thank you, uh, Mr. Amos.
Well, uh, I'd like to say that I agree with Mr. Petoka about the zoning code. It really needs to be looked at again. A hard look at it because it is antiquated. Uh, but there, there are issues with it, like, for instance, uh, and this was done before my opponent was on the council, but a methadone clinic was moved right into my neighborhood on the other side of Dogwood Road. And guess what property it's next to? Woodlawn High School. Now, the explanation we got from, uh, our councilman at the time was, oh, well, zoning allows for it. And, uh, you know, it's, it's just absurd, and it's right across the street from a liquor store. So most of them, when they leave their methadone clinic, would go across the street to the liquor store. Now, since then, they moved in an inpatient uh, drug clinic down on the other end of the road, but it's also very near the high school and right next door to the library. So these are the kind of issues that, you know, people in Greystone and other neighbor-like neighborhoods around here, uh, that really frustrate people. So, uh, you know, there's a lot that needs to be looked at with the zoning, uh. So with, with that, I'll leave it at that. Other than, I want to apologize to my opponent. I forgot, Ms. Ms. Almond, uh, retired in 2018, not 2014. I'm so used to being in District Four.
Thank, thank you very much for your comments. We're now out of time for the formal question and answer portion, and we will move to the candidates' closing statements. Mr. Petoka, you'll make the first closing, closing statement.
Well, thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the Randallstown branch of the NAACP, and to everyone for participating this evening. So what do we expect from our elected leaders? Our leaders should be there for us, especially in times of crisis. They should be boots on the ground, not watching from the sidelines. During the past two and a half years, we simultaneously experienced multi-crisis events. A health crisis, an economic crisis, a hunger crisis, an educational crisis, and a misinformation crisis. My office organized, partnered, engaged with seven faith-based organizations to distribute tens of thousands of boxes of food to people that were in need. We were in the trenches. Additionally, my office continually provided information on proper protocols to battle the COVID-19 crisis and became a trusted source of information, not only for residents of the second district, but for residents throughout Baltimore County. These efforts were recognized by many organizations. I was present, not on the sidelines. That is why I've been endorsed by the Teachers Association of Baltimore County, the Education Support Professionals of Baltimore County, the Baltimore County Firefighters Association,
Thirty seconds.
Baltimore County Federation of Public Employees, the Sierra Club Maryland Chapter, the Central Baltimore County Democratic Club, the Northern Baltimore County Democratic Club, the Baltimore County Progressive Democrats, uh, Moms Demand Action as a Gun Sense candidate, the Metropolitan Council of the AFL-CIO, Labor International Unions of North America, the Mid-Atlantic Trades Assos-, Pipe Trades Association, the Plumbers and Steamfitters, CASA in Action, and Air Revolution, and also the Fraternal Order of Police. That's why I ask you for your vote in my reelection bid. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Petoka. Mr. Amos, your closing statement.
Okay. Well, again, the three big issues for me are stopping crime, fixing our schools, and putting the brakes on overdevelopment. Uh, as far as stopping crime, I agree with Mr. McDonough's proposal to reinstate on a local level, the Police Officer Bill of Rights. Um, until it can be reinstated at state level. I believe our schools need to be thoroughly looked at. This, uh, critical race theory that supposedly is not being taught, but my sources say it is being sneaked in there particularly offends me because I have a biracial daughter. And as far as gender studies, that there, there is no place for that in our public schools at any grade. Sex education be, should be taught at sixth grade or higher with parents present. Um, I'm against waiving developer fees. One other thing that hasn't come up, I would ban, I would, uh, introduce legislation to ban the county from doing business with any organization or person that participates in or advocates for the boycott divest sanction movement. There's just no place for that kind of
Thirty seconds.
bigotry in Baltimore County. And again, there's, you know, I, I favor a moratorium on PUDs. Uh, then we can start focusing on quality of life issues like this constant drag racing and fireworks, uh, loud music, uh, illegal signs on the roadside, those sorts of things. So, again, crime comes first. If we do something about that, everything else will follow. Thank you for your time, and I ask for your vote on November 8th, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters and Mr. Petoka for participating.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, both of you, um, Mr. Petoka, Mr. Amos. Thank you, audience members. Um, thanks for the candidates and serving as an example of civil discourse. You've given Baltimore County residents a great deal to think about as we vote in November. I'd like to thank our forum committee for arranging the event, and the League of Women Voters, Baltimore County, and NAACP of Randallstown for co-sponsoring the forum. In the next few days, recordings of this forum will be available on the League's website and on the Vote411 organizational site. 41, that's V-O-T-E, 411.org. General Election Day is November 8. Early voting begins October 27 and ends November 3. Um, Vote411 is the League of Women Voters Online Voters Guide. It's a one-stop shop for everything that you need about understanding candidate positions, your polling place, and more. Hard copies of the League's voter guides are available at branches of the Baltimore County Public Library, senior centers, Head Start Centers, and college campuses. We hope that you all will consider joining or donating to the League of Women Voters of Baltimore County and the Randallstown NAACP to support our work. Thank you again for coming, and good night.
Good night, and thank you.
And don't confuse the two of us because we look alike. I'm the one with the mustache.
Thank you. Nice meeting you, Mr. Amos.
Nice.